treatment that you received.
I'm here. Am I still muted? It does not say that I'm muted. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? It is not showing me as being muted. I can hear you. All right, well, I tell you, I can't just... I am at my office. All right, I do, well, let's see, I've got a message. Barry Pennholler says he can hear me. Testing. Can anyone hear me? Can you hear me? Sean Greggs, any clay?
Yeah, Sean, we got you on the speakerphone and looks like you're having some complications.
Okay, well, I'm going to take myself...
I'm dialed in on the phone, can anyone hear me?
This conference is no longer being recorded. This conference will now be recorded.
I'm connected through the phone. That's right, good afternoon. My name is Adam Moore, I'm representing Charlottesville's residency, standing in for Kerry Shepherd today. Okay. The first... This is from preliminary engineering, you all have that correct? So the two things I'd like to highlight on here are the two bridge replacement projects. The advertisement dates shown are still conservative. We are working and we think we'll be successful in accelerating both of those projects. But new advertisement dates have not been set yet, so you can expect an update on those new advertisement dates soon, I think. Third item on the list, art cut at Shelby, brought 29 intersection improvements. Our location and design team's currently working on the transcript from the recently held public hearing. And I know there's been some questions, I believe, about getting copies of that, and that will be provided once it's been compiled and documented, the transcript. Going to the next slide, rural rustics. One note to add, Forest Drive, we're hoping to apply the surface treatment this week. I know other updates on P Ridge Road. Next slide, being construction activities. Leon Road has been an ongoing effort in finding a solution and funding for that solution for the pipelining. And we're going to be proceeding with installation of that pipe liner. That's going to be funded by a combination of residency maintenance funds and county safety operational funds. And we're working on the installation schedule for that, and I expect you all will be able to get an update from Kerry soon about that. Next slide, traffic engineering items. Route 15, James Madison Highway, we're going to be installing stop bars and transverse rumble strips, as has been discussed previously. And we're going to be daylighting existing signage, you know, limbing up the trees in the area. Also installed some flashing LED stop signs at the Pratt's intersection. And there was a question about an additional flashing LED sign from the other approach here. We discussed that with our district traffic engineer. And at this time, that's not warranted. There's been one crash from that approach in the last three years. And the location of that sign puts that at a fairly significant risk for damage by trucks and larger vehicles. So at this time, that's not warranted. Speed study for Race Ground Road is complete. That will remain at 35 miles per hour. And the speed study for Twymans Mill Road is ongoing. You know, I don't have the actual speed data in front of me. But typically, when it's going to remain, it means that the 85th percentile, so more than half are driving within five miles an hour of the speed limit of 35. Do you all have any questions about any part of that? I don't have any other updates to provide. I believe that it does need to be in the comp plan. Has this project in the town, has anyone coordinated with Chuck Proctor from Culpeper? He's sort of our point of contact for which projects the localities would like to submit. And I'm just hoping that this is on here. Chuck would have the information on whether it is a necessity. I think it can only improve the application if showing some consistency for the transportation plan across that boundary. Yes, sir? Okay, thank you. Not clearly, but it sounded like, is there a detour plan or phase construction for the bridge projects? I will check on that. And we will respond to you later this week. Typically, if it's a one way in, one way out, they will build half the bridge at a time. Thank you.
Working on roughly two years. It's everything in our side is done with the exception of that $400 firewall. And so we're waiting on get that done. We'll finish that project up. Marcus Alert, I'm currently involved in several groups on that to include PSAP groups, state groups and CSB groups. I had a meeting on today, actually. We are part of a pilot program, which I think Jim La图raff talked about early on. The pilot program is set to go live December 1. The 988 call center, which is heavily dependent on that program is saying they might be operational by spring or summer. So obviously we can't do a whole lot without that call center as far as changing our protocols. We submitted a plan last week to the state on how we plan to operate on that. I've got a lot of, lot of irons in the fire on that as far as what we're, what we're going to do with that when it happens. And I'm working with Jim La图raff who's been a really big help at CSB helping us work through this. GeoCom cloud-based mapping solution, this is one that we have had a success with that is fully implemented and ready to go. We replaced our old system, which was two redundant servers to the tune, be right around 12,000, $13,000 a piece to replace them. We did away with those, went to a cloud-based solution. It is completely up and running and it's working well. Have that fully integrated on 911 side as well. Road naming and signs, I'm currently in the process of naming two roads in the county with possibly a third on the horizon. I've also been noticing, and we can cover this more in the budget cycle, a lot of the signs that we installed in 2003, especially the private lane brown signs are starting to show a lot of fade, a lot of deterioration from time. What I'd like to do is get an inventory of those, see exactly what it would cost us to do a complete replacement of those older signs that you can hardly read anymore and go from there. You're not talking about a tremendous amount of the signs are about $45 a blade, a set, and then whatever it costs us to install them. So you're not talking about a tremendous amount of money, but when you start talking about county-wide inventory, it gets fairly pricey. And that's all I have for right now. I know it's a lot, but if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
So Brian, those private roads with the brown signs, but if somebody calls 911, they are in the system.
That's correct. That's correct. It's something we could look at. There's really nothing in the, and there's language in the ordinance why they're brown and why they're blue, but the blue ones don't fade. The blue ones get knocked down all the time and bent up, but they don't get, they don't fade. And that may be part of it too. We replace them so regularly because getting knocked down, we don't see the fade.
So do, so do we pay for brown, green and blue?
Yeah, we, we have blue and brown. They're only two signs we have. You see a green sign, it's owner installed. And we have a few of those around.
Roger, Houston, Salties, and now Mooney's going to.
So he says.
Things to look forward to, Mooney. Um, all right. Look at something, I mean, if they're not lasting, we should look at trying to figure out something that would cost on a long-term basis.
Sure.
Any other questions for Brian? You have a couple of things going on, don't you?
I've seen.
Yep. Noel.
All right. So October was busy. 182 calls, maintaining our average response time of 10 minutes. Continuing to assist our neighbor in counties, especially green for coverage. Working on filling our open full-time position. I had a fellow that unfortunately could not make it to our interview today due to being held over. But we're going to continue working on that. I've got several folks towards the end of the year, first of the year, that are going to be out on medical leave between new employees and orientation and, and medical leave. Overtime will likely increase on that. Spoke with the striker rep for our AED order. They're dealing with chip issues too. So December is when we're likely to receive them on that. And then the final thing, huge thank you to Michelle. We submitted the HRSA provider relief application. I don't have no idea what the funding is if we get awarded, but a dollar is better than no dollars. And I'll keep you all updated on that. Final thing, our agency inspections, November 16th. And that's just a, every two years the state comes in and fine tooth comb, make sure we're doing what we're doing. them, and it's been working on some of them, so I think it's just that time, they've all started to get cluttered. The EMS department, I've got two of theirs up there now that I've had to rebuild and, and planning on dropping them back off tomorrow and see if we can get, get that in place. We also replaced the firewall at the EMS, and their network speeds went from seventeen and eighteen and forty and whatever it wanted to do, to a steady ninety-five up and a steady ninety-five down. So that, that, that's also fast. That's about it.
All right, we fought, we fought all those computers, like, what was it? Was it two years ago? Like, a whole lot of computers. I mean, are we just, are we just doing so much technical work here, mashing the hard on computers or what?
Well, I think what happens over time, it is some of the folks that, that are having the slow computer problems are, you know, the EMS folks put a ton of local applications on them, and they get out there and they fragment the drives, and it just gets, it just gets competing with each other when, when the computers are being booted. They, in all honesty, are not the best computers we could have bought. If I had to do it all again right now, any computer we buy now will be a solid-state drive and will have at least sixteen gig of RAM. It's just, they're, they're just not that powerful. They're, they're little, little Chevy Avios, you know, they just don't have a big engine. So throw RAM out of them, but that, that's basically it. I mean, they were cheap. The good thing we have is that they do have an excellent warranty on them.
Hey, there you go.
I mean, like, if you drop it, they replace it, so, but.
All right.
Yeah, just too, yeah.
All right.
But.
Got to avoid something. All right, what about the, the radios, the repeaters that are mounted all over the place that everybody loves so much? Are we saving any money by getting rid of these things? Certainly we are, and we've got to be adjusting contracts with A and S as these things are phased out. We're not just continuing service, I hope.
I mean, we'd have to evaluate the cost of the new connection. The main thing is that the quality of the connection. So I, I can't sit here right now and tell you it's cheaper. We just know dated technology goes away, we have reliability so we can be a functional business. So I'm not able to speak to cost right now. We can do a quick look at that in the future, but reliability is what's key.
What about, like, augmenting these contracts that we have in place? I mean, are they just going to time themselves out or?
For like an A and S service or this?
A and S definitely.
I mean, we're, we're definitely, as technology moves away, we'll look to, you know, revise contracts where needed, revamp. We have quarterly meetings with A and S, for example. So anywhere we can, you know, we'll revise or save money, or if it's no longer needed, we'll thank you, no thanks. But right now, I'm not in a position to say if we're going to save any money, reliability is what we're getting here.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and also, Mr. Daniel over here, I want to thank him for letting me work on a fifty-year-old computer the other day. I think, I think he needs, he needs a new one, but it was great, memory road thing.
All right, any other questions for Livingston? All right, to Tracy.
Thank you, Bruce. Bruce also helped me with my camera situation. They weren't working last week, so very much appreciated. I think I reported at the last meeting that forty thousand we're getting from ARPA, so the VA One State Tourism Summit is next week, and hopefully, they usually tell us stuff there they wouldn't normally tell us. We get a little head start, and then I'll get my plan together. Mr. Weekly can sign off on it, I'll send it to the Tourism Committee, and then I'll work with Michelle and Bobby as far as that process goes. Galen with Firefly was hopefully going to get a map, which he did not get to me in time, to show exactly where the challenges are with the Vatty grant and to let us know what that actually means. So we're still waiting on that, but I'll get that out to everyone as soon as I receive it. Also reached out to REC, but he talked to Brian and Bruce, Mark Ponton, so I'll hopefully talk to him soon. Left a message for Chantel as well, to see where they are as far as Etland's side of things, see how things are going there, too. Those are the main things. Greg really was a true help with everybody that we gave those grants to last year. He personally helped all of them with that. And we currently have, just for reference, three tenants at the office. I had an inquiry on another one, which would bring our six thousand to seventy-two hundred, just keep that in mind for budget time, I guess. Our website hits went up, we are, had the Tourism Committee meeting, and from that we came up with Mary Madison. So we've got about twenty-five businesses participating so far into a huge grand prize of at least twenty-five dollars per prize, and most, a lot of the things will encourage people to come back and shop more, but it's mainly to get people here. December third is the parade, December fourth is Mary Madison, and there's also Smores of Santa, so we'll have a lot of things going on in December for everybody. And then we did receive a leave from, a lead from Central Virginia Partnership that we submitted a property for. We hope to hear something from that this week. And other than that, I think I've reported on everything else.
All right. Question for Tracy. Thank you, Tracy. Leader?
We've just been steady. We submitted seventy-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-one to the state, and the county got thirty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-three. We've just continued to do court. We had jury trial on the twenty-first of October that ran until ten o'clock at night. That was a long day, but we've got two in November and I think two in December, so we're starting back on those. Victoria's still working on our park papers. She hopes to be finished by the end of the year, and if she can get finished by the end of the year, then JMU will be uploading it and have it on this, for us to be, have it on our website by spring. I'm working on a grant to go to the State Library. It's due next week, and it would allow me to get eight books fixed. I think that's about it.
Questions for Ms. Love? All right, Jerry and Lindsay, other than what you're here to talk about, how's Parks and Rec going?
It's great. We're starting to wind down for the year a little bit. We had a Halloween Fest on October twenty-third. We were actually surprised, we had several hundred people come to that. It was a real big, big hit. Then on, we had the Haunted Woods last Saturday night. We had three hundred and thirty-one people paid to come through. We had probably around seventy volunteers in the woods, so that was a big hit as well. Even with the rain, we still had a pretty, a second biggest attended event for the Haunted Woods. Coming up, we have Smores of Santa on the December eleventh, and you want to talk about?
We have our winter sports registration open right now with basketball, cheerleading, hockey, roller hockey, and wrestling. So we've got about, and a few clinics that are going on with that. Registration closes next week, and we've got about close to two hundred kids registered for winter sports already. Registration's closing next week.
Questions for Parks and Rec, until we get to the next item? All right, Alan, I hear you've got some stuff to report.
Yes, sir.
You look shocked, so I'm curious. All right, then, go ahead.
Just general starter stuff. The audit is next week. It's Robinson, Palmer, Cox is coming over, and I've been working with Michelle Thacker in finance to get a lot of their stuff done. As far as I know, everything for the administration side is ready, so whenever they get here, we've got all their stuff situated and they'll be good to go. The other big thing is it's getting close to December, and the Ethics Council is going to be sending me an email, so we get to go through the fun of the statements of economic interest and all the other stuff for the county departments, all of y'all, and some of the authorities and other commissions we have. When that happens, because they'll be sending me out a new thing, I will get it out to everybody who needs to send and stuff to me. They'll get it to me, I'll put it where it needs to go. If it doesn't come to me by the deadline, which is February first, I believe the proper way to do it is I will give a list to Clarissa Berry, who will then come after everyone, and we don't want that. So, but other than that, yes, everything's going great. I have been approved by the governor to be a notary.
Congratulations.
I need to go visit Ms. Luke when all the stuff comes in, so yay.
All right. Economic interest forms, going to be due soon. Let's do those. Go for it, right? All right, we do have, we do have, Ms. Murray is on the go-to meeting. Ms. Murray?
Yes.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, we're working away in the treasures office, of course, as you know, the bills are out, and we're working a little short staff, but for a good reason. We had an employee have her baby a few weeks ago, so little Jared and Wes Nicholson made his debut on October fifteenth. We are working with Avenity, things are moving along there, so there's some things that we still need to get done and a couple approvals for some things that we will need in place to be able to import from, to RDA from Avenity, but we're working all that out. The audit is next week, and I'm busy working on that. Mary Earhart is working from her office, she's already been onsite, so she is working offsite, so we will be definitely ready for RFC when they arrive next week. So I think that's it.
Do you have anything for Ms. Murray? Thank you, Ms. Murray.
Thank you.
How's the school board doing?
Doing great, doing great. We, we met last night, and I pulled out three things I thought I might mention you all as highlights. Of course, I think you were there, Clay, so you might have other questions. Of course, we approved a request from the board for a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar supplemental appropriation. That's to support the after-school program that we're running in partnership with Parks and Rec and the Boys and Girls Club through a grant that we got from the state, but I think it's ultimately federal money that's supporting that. That program is every day after school, or five days a week after school, three thirty to five thirty, and there are about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and thirty-five kids participating in that. It's aimed at some supervised study time to help them make up some of the learning loss that we've had over the last year and a half, and then, of course, recreational time as well. So we're pleased about that, and we've, you know, we're requesting that appropriation from you to support that program. Second thing I wanted to say a little bit about, of course, we, last night, as, as has been the case throughout the fall, we, we get some opposition and public comment to our, our mask mandate in the schools. On the other hand, several of us on the board hear complaints from time to time from folks who support the mandate and think we're not forcing it, enforcing it well enough in the schools. You know, there's been no discussion among us to, to end the mandate. I mean, we, we put that in place because of the request from the Rappahannock, Rappahannock Rapidan Health District, and we see their numbers every week. They, they continue to show the county in a, typically in a high or substantial rate of transmission, and there's been no successful legal challenge to, to the governor's insistence that we really aren't, aren't free to do anything other than keep the mask mandate in place. So, so it's still there, and, and the good news is it, it does seem to be helping. I know back in mid-September, we had about a hundred and fourteen students who were quarantined because of exposure, and of course, we have students in quarantine, and we have, they have to stay home, and we have to teach them online, so it puts a great deal of stress on our teachers. That number is down significantly, has been going down, it was sixty-one at our last report, so down, down about half. So, so we think what we're doing is helping to keep the situation under control and protect our, our students. Third thing I wanted to say, something about, we're hearing a lot that, 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 that our teachers are, are, are under a tremendous amount of stress. Several have told me it's been the hardest year that they've ever experienced, you know, dealing with, you know, enforcing the mask mandate, trying to make up for the learning losses in the previous years, dealing with the kids that are quarantined. And so we've been, we've been trying very hard to, to, to find ways to reduce that stress and to, and to acknowledge the fact that our teachers are working harder and, and more hours than, than normal because of all the unusual things they're dealing with. So last month, we, we added some half-days to the calendar to take some relief off, to give them some relief. We had a late request from about thirty teachers yesterday before our meeting to turn the three days before Thanksgiving into asynchronous days, or basically do all our instruction online. We, we just didn't feel like that was practical and, and, but what we did instead was approved last night, turning the, the Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving, which had been a half-day already in our calendar, we just turned that into a full off-day to, you know, do a little something to take some of the, some of the stress off of our teachers. And then, of course, as well, the superintendent announced last night that she's going to be drawing upon federal ESER money that we're getting to give a fifteen hundred dollar bonus, you might call it, to all of our full-time employees and a seven hundred and fifty dollar bonus to all of our part-time employees. So all of that, just to, to show our awareness and appreciation and acknowledgement of, of the hard, extra work that all of our staff is, is doing this year. So I thought those are the most important things to bring to you. Any, any questions or concerns on the part of the board, anything you'd like me to try to say something about?
Any questions for Barry?
Yeah, go ahead. Barry, I got one. I, I was listening on, online last night, the fifteen hundred dollar.
Uh, that number is down significantly and has been going down. It was sixty-one at our last report, so down, down about half. So, so we think what we're doing, uh, is helping, uh, to keep the situation under control and protect our, our students. Uh, third thing I wanted to say something about, uh, we're hearing a lot that, 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 that our teachers are, are, are under a tremendous amount of stress. Uh, several have told me it's been the hardest year that they've ever experienced. Uh, you know, dealing with, you know, enforcing the mask mandate, trying to make up for the, uh, uh, learning losses in the previous years, dealing with the kids that are, uh, quarantined. And so we've been, we've been trying very hard to, to, uh, to find ways to reduce that stress a, and to, and to acknowledge the fact that our teachers are working harder and, 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 and more hours than, than normal, uh, because of all the, uh, unusual things they're dealing with. So last month, we, uh, we added some half-days to the calendar to take some, uh, relief off, uh, to give them some relief. Uh, we had a late request, uh, from about thirty teachers, uh, yesterday before our meeting, to turn the three days, um, before Thanksgiving into, uh, asynchronous days or, or basically do all our instruction online. Uh, we, we just didn't feel like that was practical and, and, but what we did instead, uh, was, uh, approved last night, uh, turning the, the Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving, which had been a half-day already in our calendar, uh, we just turned that into a full off-day, um, to, uh, you know, do a little something to take some of the, some of the stress off of our teachers. And then, of course, as well, the superintendent announced last night that she's going to be drawing upon, uh, federal ESER money that we're getting, um, to give a fifteen-hundred-dollar, um, bonus, you might call it, to all of our full-time employees and a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar bonus to, uh, all of our part-time employees. So all of that, just to, to, to show our awareness and appreciation and acknowledgement of, of, of the hard, extra work, uh, that all of our staff is, is doing this year. So that, I hope those are the most important things to, uh, bring to you. Any, any questions or, uh, concerns on the part of the board, anything you'd like me to try to say something about?
Any questions for Barry? Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Barry, I got one. I, I was listening, uh, on, online last night. The, uh, the fifteen-hundred-dollar bonus, that's going to be in their November thirtieth paycheck, I believe, or a separate check to be paid November thirtieth.
I think that's right, yeah.
But, but the, the grant to cover that, I thought, did I misunderstand? That was not going to be awarded till like December third. Although, you know, Superintendent Graham, uh, is confident we will get it. It, did I have those dates mixed up?
Uh, I, I, I don't know. Uh, uh, I'm, 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 I, I, I don't, I don't know what to tell you about that. Uh, uh, except I'm confident that, that, that the superintendent is not going to be, uh, spending money we don't have.
I agree.
But I, I missed that detail that you're talking about, uh, with the checks going out at November thirtieth, but we're not actually getting the money until December third. I, I missed that, so I can't, I can't clarify that for you. I'll check into it.
Okay, the, the other one last night, and it's the other portion of ESER funding that the county needs to do a supplemental was for the three hundred and fifty K for Parks and Rec and Boys and Girls Club, uh, working with them. Um, and it looks like we can do that on our eleven-twenty-three meeting. So that's kind of the timeline we're working on, so y'all know.
Uh, but that clarification, that's, that was not ESER money. Uh, that was something through the, uh, Virginia Department of Education, federal money they had through the cor- cor- coronavirus response and relief supplemental appropriation act. So it's a different, different pool of money than ESER, but it's, but it is certainly federal money, um, out, you know, and, and COVID, COVID relief and response money.
All right, and well, we'll get it to you in two weeks.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we had the official request from Ms. Crop. I spoke to Ms. Graham earlier just to make sure we weren't jamming anything up way to the twenty-third. She said that would be fine, so we'll have that exactly as the request came before you. And, and, uh, Mr. Pennler is correct, it's not ESER, but it is another round of federal funds. It's hard to track all these federal funds, but, but it's another round. But we had the official request and we will look to bring that for the board on action on eleven-twenty-three.
All right, very good. Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
Um, all right, old business. Jerry, Lindsay, step up and tell us about your big PRA project.
Holler it loud though. Um, I want to thank the board.
Hold on one second.
Mr. Livingston, can you load the presentation, please? I apologize, Mr. Crawford.
That's okay, Mr. Weekly.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I would like to thank the board for all your past support. And, uh, we really think that we have a project for Hoover Ridge that will impact Madison County for generations to come. So with that, Lindsay's worked really hard on this and I'll let her go ahead.
All right, um, this kind of started off as a, you know, dream of mine, just to provide a really good playground to Hoover Ridge Park. Um, we currently have a few play structures, but we've been working, um, I guess, on part of this site plan that was developed when Hoover Ridge was kind of built to put in a good playground. Um, and then it has evolved in the last few months to, um, becoming more than that. Working with, uh, Anagram with the schools, um, become more than just the playground and splash pad, um, or water education zone. Um, let's go ahead to the next slide. Uh, in developing this project, uh, we were looking to make, um, accessible and equitable, equitable community outdoor recreation facilities for everyone in our community. Um, not just our kids who play sports, not just people who just walk on the, on the trails. Um, but to put people out in the park who just want to have fun, um, by providing, uh, basketball, tennis, pickleball, um, the splash park play area, playground, and a walking area around our, um, and that, and moving roller hockey from, uh, the recreation center behind the American Legion Hall. And go ahead to the next one. Uh, we worked with, um, Marvin Henchy of Henchy and Baines to kind of develop a site concept based on what we were looking for. Um, and we, when we first, when we first started with the playground project, um, the, I don't know if you're familiar with Hoover Ridge Park, um, but the little red, uh, square down there is our red barn. And, um, the area to be worked on for the whole site plan is, um, just below our football fields. And right now, that's two separate play areas. Um, sorry, turn it on. The two separate play areas here, uh, there's a, where we're going to put our splash pad playground and then all of the other recreational areas right here. Go to the next one. This is kind of what you would expect to see if you were driving to Hoover Ridge Park. So this is currently where we have a silo, um, then there's a new picnic shelter we put in, in the player, uh, grass area over here. If you're down here in this field and looking towards the road. Sorry, do you want me to look at that one?
Nah, just keep going. We, we, we got it, keep going.
I gotta talk this way and, okay, sorry. Um, but if you're looking at it, uh, we would have our water education zone, splash pad right here, our playground right here next to the picnic shelter, and then all this area back here below those football lights would be where we'd have the basketball, tennis, roller hockey rink. Go to the next one. This is kind of what you would look at if you were seeing Hoover Ridge Park. Uh, this is the concept, uh, the site plan that, um, Henchy and Baines came up with. Uh, you can't really see much here, but if you'll go to the next one, I kind of zoomed in on what we were looking at. Um, it's not showing the bathrooms here, but there's parking here. We'll have our water education zone, our playground. Uh, the tennis court, we're not going to put here, we're actually going to combine that with pickleball. Uh, put a basketball court in here and move roller hockey in this area here. Uh, they also have, um, some other activities like a gaga pit, um, another picnic shelter here. We already have our volleyball court, the sand volleyball court here. Um, another area they had put in was a dog park, which is something we had talked about before. Um, but I think this idea here shows just how much we could add to Hoover Ridge that would benefit so many people. Um, it is missing a walking path that we would like to put in around this area. Um, so if any of you have been around hockey or know about our hockey program, it's in the winter and it's all under lights. So this area would be lit up. Um, if you were a walker and use the walking trails or walk the track, uh, you know that from November, when they do daylight savings to spring, there's no safe place for people to really walk outdoors after work. Um, this would provide an outdoor walking area right here under the lights, um, because we'd have hockey going on most days. Um, so it's a safe place for people to walk. People can walk while their kids are playing. I mean, just adds a whole lot of, uh, extra activities that we can do year-round. Go to the next one. Uh, in designing this and working with, uh, Anagram with the county schools, um, we kind of came up with two things that we could dream, you know? I had always wanted to do a playground that was accessible. Um, and then she had the dream of maybe adding a splash pad or water education zone to this playground area, um, using some of the ESER funds they had, they have been awarded. Go to the next one. We had Sparks App Play Design, uh, and overall plan. Um, can't see really anything here. Uh, go to the next one. And go to the next one. This is something we could have at Hoover Ridge. We're looking at, uh, accessible surfacing here, playground structures, there's swings, um, a zip line, then we have all of the water education features here. Uh, I don't know if you're familiar with splash pads, um, but you don't need to have any, uh, standing water, safer for kids. Um, the water gets recycled.
Intreated.
Intreated.
And no lifeguards.
Uh, it'd be set on a timer, so you could go up and hit a button and then everything would kind of be available to you and then at night it'd turn off. But we have visited with our Hoover Ridge Summer Camp Program, we've visited the one at Rockwater Park in Culpeper. And it's kind of where we got a lot of our ideas and some of the things that we would like to change about the Rockwater Park one, if we were to have one. Um, but I think having everything all together makes it so much easier for parents. If you can go to the next one. Uh, this is just kind of showing some of the different ideas that they put together, um, for our playground area. Uh, the surfacing is that pour and play rubber surfacing. Um, it is accessible, easy to walk on. Um, we made it interactive, you know, to kind of make sure you've got some imagination in here and not just, um, jumping from structure to structure. Uh, there's tons of places for kids to play from ages two to twelve. So we've got a large range of, um, availability here for parents. Um, we've got some features here that are assisted services. The zip line has a seat in it, um, where you can have small children or individuals that can't hang on to, uh, the little seat that is provided. Um, we also have friendship swing, so we're kind of, uh, looking for group play. Um, again, we're looking into the social and emotional wellbeing for all of our kids. Um, so this is the playground part. We'll go to the next one. These are just more detailed renderings of all of what they put together for us. Um, you can kind of see that the assisted seating here. Uh, you can go to the next. Um, just give you a look at these. Go to the next. Uh, the splash pad area or the water education zone, some of these features are some that we would not use. Um, there are some other features we'd like to add that would, uh, be more educational, but still really, really fun, um, dealing with water pressure, turning knobs, that kind of thing. But for the most part, you know, we're looking at having a really safe way for kids to cool down, um, in the summertime. Again, all ages, twelve, uh, two and up. Go to the next. All right, next. Again, fully accessible. Um, there's no standing water here, so you don't have to worry about the drowning hazard. Next. And next. Some of the things we were looking for, again, the accessible, uh, we wanted assisted seating. We wanted surfacing to be, you know, where you could walk on it easily, whether you're using, um, for older folks or for people in wheelchairs or crutches, anything like that. We wanted to be an inclusive design. We wanted to promote imaginative play. Um, of course, exercise. We were looking at things to be equitable. If we have a swimming pool, I mean, you're talking memberships, a lot of costs associated with it. But for this, um, it would be free to the public, so it wouldn't be charging people admission to get in. Um, it's open to everybody, um, and available for anybody to use. Uh, we wanted a fun and educational design, um, and we also wanted it to be safe. The full site concept includes playground, uh, the splash pad, the roller hockey rink, basketball court, tennis pickleball courts, uh, a walking path, shade structures, because there are no trees really around that area. And then the last one was accessible restrooms. Right now, we just put in, um, restrooms that are concession stands by the baseball and softball fields at Hoover Ridge. Um, and I think the idea was for those to be used by everyone in the park. Um, but they're not really convenient for people to stop in and use the bathroom because they're in the center of this cloverleaf structure where all the baseball and softball fields are. Um, this one would be right in place of that silo. So people from the shelters, uh, football, soccer, those fields could all, you know, use this bathroom, um, the accessible restrooms that we have, we'd be putting in. Okay. Uh, hockey is in this because, uh, we had this really cool opportunity. Um, and Chris Artelli is here, he's been working on this hockey rink relocation project. This came about before we came up with this new site concept. Um, they always wanted to move the hockey rink to Hoover Ridge. Right now, it is behind the American Legion Hall. It's, um, not really known to a whole lot of people that it's back there. Um, so we're looking to remove that to Hoover Ridge. Um, by adding it to this new site concept, um, we can get more kids using hockey. We can use it for other things. It's just more beneficial for our entire park and our community. Uh, Chris Artelli's been working on, he's been working on, uh, a grant with Washington Capitals and it's their Community Improvement Grant. Um, we've spoken to them and they are really interested in having Madison be, uh, apply for this grant with them that would provide rink servicing, goals and netting, dashboards, uh, benches and chain link fencing. So everything but the surface, uh, the asphalt and gravel surface underneath the hockey rink. They would also do a huge ribbon-cutting ceremony. Um, they would do, host learn to play and learn to skate clinics for youth and adults. This is Washington Capitals players and, um, coaching staff would come and do these clinics here for free in our community. Um, and they would also provide training and equipment to our schools. So our PE programs could get free hockey materials and equipment to teach hockey. They would provide clinics, if the funds allowed, to teach, um, our PE teachers how to do those clinics, um, so that we could have hockey starting from, you know, uh, our public schools instead of just in our recreation.
It would look a lot like the actual Capitals rink except for many versions of them. There are several other places around that have done this with Washington Capitals, coming from Falkir, Morton, and Fredericksburg, both have done the same thing. So we would be the only other one around the area for that.
So they're very interested in Madison because we service a lot of communities. We could get, uh, there's nothing in, uh, green, orange, Rappahannock, Culpeper, nothing like this. So, yeah, so this would really, uh, benefit, you know, uh, counties outside of ours in this area. So we stand a good chance of, of being part of this grant. Next. And then benefits to the community, um, in providing this wonderful recreation area, um, promoting healthy lifestyle in a family-friendly environment. Um, it's equitable, it's open to everybody. Um, it's inclusive, we're making it so that people can go of any ability. Um, benefiting all ages, uh, providing a lot of different activities. And, um, I think this would have a huge economic impact. I know, uh, me being a parent and then also in our Hoover Ridge Summer Camp Program, how many times we went to, um, Culpeper to use their, uh, playground and splash pad. Um, it kind of puts you on the map when parents need something to do, somewhere new to take their kids in the summer. Um, I, our Boys and Girls Club could use it, our schools could use it. Uh, it'd be open made through Oc- through October or to October. Um, so it would just have a lot of, um, community impact. People would come to play. We've got the hockey rink with, uh, hopefully Washington Capitals would be involved in that. So I think this would be really, really good for our community.
All right. Good job.
That's all I got.
Um, before we open it up for questions, I think, Chris, what, you have things you'd like to add?
Lindsay, you did a wonderful job with that whole summary, even the hockey part, there's nothing left to add to that. Uh, we are working right now with, um, memory and understanding between county and capitals. The grant program will open up in January, so we want to be poised and ready to take advantage of that. And, uh, yeah, that's, yeah, that pretty much summed it up, but we'll just keep moving forward. It'll be time to start tightening up our estimates and get past that level one estimate, get down to more details and get a, get a kind of structural timeline sketched out.
So we're talking about the timeline. Um, the first thing we'd have to do is get an engineering plan together and then, um, work on the infrastructure. So we would need the parking and everything needed before we can get to the playground area and then hockey. I mean, with the grant funding, he's probably got about two years to get, um, to use the funds if we were to be awarded the grant. So there is kind of a need to get a lot of this stuff done sooner rather than later. Um, same with any funding we may get from other grants. There's a timeline on, on how fast we have to use them.
All right, I'm going to open it up one more time. Danny, as chairman of PRA, do you have any comments on this?
I think it's a wonderful idea. Uh, I've sat all along, I live in this county. For years and years and years, we visited other counties in our area that had parks. We didn't have parks in that, but Hoover Ridge still. And we get so many comments, people coming to Hoover Ridge saying what a nice place it is. Basically, what is percentage of the budget, county budget for Parks and Rec is very, very minimal to what we have out there and taken care of. I would, I would love to see this come to fruition and, uh, the community and, uh, our supervisors be able to look at this.
All right, um, questions from the board?
Uh, sorry. Yeah, I have a, a quick one. There was, so there was a, it was a matter of a subdivision?
There, there, the, the schools, uh, and Anagram have committed three hundred K to this out of ESER funding. Um, to be applicable, they have to own the property. So the direction and requested by the PRA board at this point is to do a three-acre subdivision in the middle of the park within the Eastman, um, and award it to the schools. Um, and that would allow that, those funds to go towards this project.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, can I just put some background information? So great presentation, a lot of efforts that's gone into staff, community members. Uh, so I thank them all for it. And, and we had this as old business because it did come before as a request. PRA took formal action. And, and we had this as old business, because it did come before as a request, PRA took formal action um, to consider it for a subdivision um, of, of about three acres. Um, when I've got involved early, I shouldn't say involved, when I learned of the project, they've been involved. I think it's a cool project, the question always becomes like, how do we get there? So there's a couple moving things, one, you get this awesome opportunity for more presence beyond Madison County with the Capitals. And then you have timeline for Estor funds. Well, before Estor funds could be approved, you have, they have to submit it, they being the schools, we'd like to do this project, can we do it? Before they could even fund playground equipment or whatever, and all this, even with Washington Capitals, it goes back to a plan of engineering, developing a site plan, you gotta do earthwork regardless. Um, so what I wanted to talk briefly to the board tonight is, whether we're going to go the direction with the school board or with the Capitals, we have to get moving, I, I understand that the board desires to do so, and I would say, I'd recommend that, but I recommend it, looking at an engineering service component to this. We don't have an engineering service agreement, which would allow you to have engineering firms or retainer, retainer's probably not the best word, because we're not looking to pay engineering firms to stay under contract, it's an avenue to retain engineering firms. So when you have projects come up or part of capital projects, so it's not just PRA, it could be parking lots like you looked at, it could be EMS station, you give them that, they develop a scope of work, they give you a fee, that would give us some traction. We could say, hey, let's start that direction with this project, I think you need to know that as your basis, so we can get moving. So moving dirt for Capitals, moving dirt for Splash Pad, the other thing is, we have a resident expert now on our staff who has been through the town Culpeper days with the Splash Pad. So there's a lot of lessons learned and things that we can have oversight from a staff level to help the project. But I think before you move any direction, I recommend an engineering service component of this, so we can move forward, establish, um, you know, where we get utilities, but basically some rough costs and estimates, and then you can determine, you want to divide the land, you don't, whatever. But I think if we show that you move forward that direction, the Capitals or the schools can say, hey, they're serious, or took action to move this direction, if that direction is, my recommendation is engineering to get started if the board wants to do so. And this has to be a capital plan to it. So um, whatever force you want to do forward or moving forward, we will look to fund that, so we would have a lot of conversations during FY23. There is some money, I'm not committing Parks and Rec to it tonight, they have about 65, 60K, somewhere north, south, somewhere in there. Maybe, maybe the approach is ask, hey, we realize this is too much of a heavy lift to do the whole project, would you be willing to consume, commit some funding, skin in the game, to engineering to help see it through? Uh, and I think that's where community buying comes in, we have great community partners, great Parks and Rec staff. The board's first got to decide if this is a vision or a path you want to go down, staff can take it from there. But the first step, if the board approves, would be engineering, in my opinion.
This has come up, oh, three or four meetings now, uh, and longer than that, but directly spoken about at PRA meetings. And it, it is, we're at a point with this project specifically, um, we need some engineering drawings to start understanding what this thing is going to cost us and how to proceed forward. Um, I like Jonathan's approach on trying to retain some engineering services, not just for this project, for, for lots of projects, uh, on the basis that we seem to use engineering services for everything all the time. Uh, and this would be a good project to kind of start to, start the ball rolling. Um, there is a lot of opportunity, but it's just kind of where it is. Other questions, comments? Looking at you over here.
Yeah, well.
Come on, Kerry.
Yeah, I, I think it's a, it's a tremendous vision, I, I'd like to see it come about as well. So there's a Parks and Rec meeting this coming Monday, the 15th, seven o'clock, right here. Um, so, uh, folks, I think, uh, maybe at the Parks and Rec meeting, the board of the Parks and Rec should be uh, addressed to see if they would be willing to, to uh, finance the, the um, engineering and site plans, which, I don't know, I, I'm thinking 30 grand probably to get that done, what do you think, Kevin, you know?
I don't know.
What's your?
Just.
No, we, yeah.
What would I do?
We just went through, we just went through, uh, parking lot studies, uh, those were 20K.
Yep.
Um, this has got, it, this doesn't have the same scope, but it, it's going to be comfortable.
We probably ought to go ahead and get the site plan.
Absolutely.
So, I say, uh, we, we approached the Parks and Rec board Monday and see what that goes. So.
Sounds good.
Other comments from the board?
Well, I, I have a month and 21 days, uh, I was just looking at my watch. Um, and to support it thoroughly, uh, I think it's awesome. Um, all I can say is I'll be ready to pay my taxes, because it ain't going to be cheap, uh, to, to, to build it and maintain it, but we understand that. I look forward, I guess, if I'm lucky enough to, to bring grandkids out there, uh, someday when you get this, whatever it is done. Um, I will say, when we do catch a little flack about Hoover Ridge and um, uh, the McDowell's are not here tonight, but it's, it's usually about Detroit walking trails. Uh, I like that, I don't mind.
Short walking trails, you said?
That are not paved.
That they're not paved.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
Uh, and, and they're not lit either, obviously, but, uh, at, at my age, I can still stumble over the roots and stuff in the woods and, and count that as helping me to um, maintain balance. But that, those days will pass, and I'll be more sympathetic to the folks who are looking for, uh, um, you know, safe walking trails. And so, certainly, certainly, I would love to see the hockey rink moved from where it is, uh, that's a great place for it. And absolutely, think about the, the adults and, and their needs for recreation and exercise and.
Yeah, they said, the Capitals told us they would do clinics for adults and kids, so.
For hockey, uh, roller hiking?
Yeah.
We're hoping you and Clay go ahead and get a football team.
I, I don't even know what half these sports are, um, it's just so weird. Um, Ms. Hoffman?
Well, my question is, if, if we give the school the property, they, in order to get the money, then what's their responsibility to this whole project after that? I mean, are they going to maintain it?
The direction, the, the direction or the conversation, preliminary conversation from the schools is essentially to do a long-term MOU with Parks and Rec, and we would end up maintaining it. The ownership of the land, I know there's, I, I think it's just kind of natural, um, and everybody's apprehensive to be awarding land to a different entity. But all this land, no matter if it's schools or county, belongs to citizens of Massillon County. Um, and if we forget that, then we're all fooling ourselves. Um, hopefully, the schools would be, they, they would kind, or they would get some priority as far as scheduling of, I, I don't know, field trips across the way, um, but that really is, Anagram's comment, I thought, had a lot of uh, traction. We did the high school project several years ago, we've done a couple different little projects that are more infrastructure type of things that people really don't know about or forget about in a short period of time. The, this type of thing, her comment was, I want to do something that kids can actually get some enjoyment from. And there's some validity to that. But yes, awarding land over, it's kind of a direction why this board hadn't, it hadn't been brought in front of us real heavily. There's a bunch of other steps that need to be take, that need to take place prior to awarding land, committing to frankly, major funds. Um, we need to get this engineering drawing put together so we can see really the scope of it. Um, it would be nice to have a turnkey operation that we could just say, we're going to have this in a year. That's just probably not very realistic, we're going to have to kind of do this over multiple years. I think the thing that Hobbs started and will get better at, uh, especially this year and moving forward, is having this capital budget where we can start planning some of these expenditures over multiple years and take advantage of different things. We know the Estor funds have to be spent before 2024, uh, so that gives us a little bit of window there. It sounds like Capitals, it's a two-year deal, um, so we do have a little bit of plan, we do have time to plan this. I mean, the school project that we just completed, we talked about that for almost two years, um, prior to getting even a shovel in the ground. It's a big project too, um, different deal, but big project. Marty?
My question, I guess, is for Chris, if we had engineering drawings in a site plan, would that be sufficient, do you think, for the Caps to know that we're serious about this?
Uh, I, I think the signed MOU will indicate that we're serious.
Oh, okay.
And that will get the ball moving forward. Uh, we will need that basic infrastructure in place and then give them a notice to proceed. At that point in time, they will, you know, hire the contractor to order the materials actually to do the installation. That's the, the timeline that they sketched out, we've had a couple of, uh, virtual meetings with them. So we get the MOU, everybody's got a signal they're intent to proceed, then it's up to us, we've got the basic infrastructure, the pad, asphalt pad down. And, and of course, this is all subject to the grant being through, so really, after the MOU, the first step is to, so get the grant application after the first of the year, let it go through the process, and uh, once we get the notice of the grant approved, then we can engage the work.
So that MOU is between Parks and.
Yeah, that was, is that the applicant or the application, PRA will be the applicant? Or will it be Madison Hockey?
Actually, our, our question to you is, who's the appropriate entity to sign for the county? It should be PRA signing or the board, um, we've had an opportunity to look at the MOU circulated among the interested parties, so everybody's pretty much bought into it.
Would it be something that y'all could, I mean, and we're still on those developmental stages, would you be able to send it to Jonathan, let it flow through our board and Sean Gray or more, and then we kind of see, see where it all started shaking together?
Yeah, I think, I think that's essential, so everybody, because I'm saying.
Absolutely. So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, because this costs no money, if, uh, you like that, you print that back there? Uh, this costs no money, if, if you like for me to get started with engineering services for considerations, you just give me the directive, we'll pay an RFP, and I want to clarify, it'll go beyond just Parks and Rec. So we already have an engineering service that maintains our landfill closure plan, so there's different items that we can address through an engineering service agreement, and then when we have a project that we want to be considered, we send that to them, develop scope of work, let us review, give us a proposal to do this work, and we, we award it. So it's a procurement side too, that once you've established those engineers, and we will put it out there 30 days or so, you probably have another uh, two weeks or so after you receive them, narrow it down, and then you would go to make some type of selection. So you're probably looking at the beginning of the year, um, sometime before you would do your engineering service agreement, and then you would farm this work, when I say farm the work, you would give it out, get cost on it to do the work, and then issue, you know, get a PO approved to y'all and issue them to start work on the, on the site drawing.
Is this a direction that we're interested in going, and I see this as not just a good start for this project, but a good start for multiple things that we deal with, with the county. Um, we probably need a, Sean Gray, it's going to take him forever to get off of you, uh, he's going to tell me that we need a motion for this. Um, there, well, you can play your play. Um, uh, is somebody, can we proceed down that path, or anybody got any other comments about it?
So what do you?
So basically, the motion would be, sir, is uh, move to authorize county administrator to issue an RFP uh, for the purposes of retaining annual engineering services.
Aye, so move.
Motion made and accepted, further discussion? Here are none, all in favor, signal popping, saying aye. Aye, same thing, so, thank you all, this is exciting.
Thank you.
All right, um, we're going to move through a couple new business items, Clark Security Agreement, Mr. Weekly?
Yes, um, so, I had a meeting several uh, months ago, uh, Sheriff Department, uh, courts, uh, facilities and maintenance and so forth. And um, it, it comes down to maintaining equipment, whether it's door lock mechanisms, cameras, battery backup, uh, the whole nine. Uh, before you, if you go to, go to the second page, we'll get back to the money, we all, you know, that, that is an important part. So this is a statement of work, um, I will say, it's a low level, I mean, $7,200 a year is, is, is money, I, I understand that. But in, in meeting all department needs, um, there's a, there's records that could be requested be downloaded. I know right now, I think Clark Security works for the Sheriff's Department, if they were in a need to download video, uh, his department sent someone over, he would download and get that information for them. Um, we've had other people look at this equipment in the past, and I don't know if it's because they don't represent this equipment, but you know, the comments we got back from two different vendors is, we had to work on this, we would just replace the equipment. We don't want to do that unless we have to. Um, but Clark Security is a familiar, uh, company, uh, they were actually part of the design, installation of the equipment, and they've been maintaining it right now, but they've been doing it on a on-call basis. Uh, we find ourselves in situations where we, you can't go turn a key and lock the door. Uh, so it's scheduling, coordinations, when courts are closed, that may come down to a judge, through either through Lita or Wendy's office, the sheriff may have some requests. This also covers making uh, badges and things of that nature. It's my understanding that with Clark, we'll also cross stream someone within the Sheriff's Department if they want to make badges. But this group would be the responsible individual, uh, doing it, when I say badges, it's, it's access cards, excuse me.
I was thinking it was like craft hour.
That, we, we can't, we can't get county IDs made this way, but the primary function for this is eight hours a month, whether we want to use it in one day, I like to think of it eight hours as a net, right, for total. And if the sheriff needs something, we'll make the request, we'll get it done, if Lita or Wendy or, or anyone, we'll get it done. But it's also maintaining the equipment, uh, right now, it's just been on call. I'm sure this system has to go through patchwork, antivirus updates, all that fun stuff that I don't speak that language first does. Um, but this is the level of service, it brings consistency, I would like to think that our staff time, as well as constitutional office can be spent on other things and let this maintenance agreement, if you will, be put in place. Um, it's a tryout, we, we were, when I say a tryout, we were given two proposals. One was an eight-hour per month for 7,200, so basically 600 a month times 12 months. Or you could look at 16 days, and you basically would just double this number, we didn't want to just jump out there for 16 hours. We may not only need the eight, or maybe we find ourselves at a lower threshold. But I do think this brings consistency, it's a vendor that's already approved and set up in the county. Uh, truly, if we had some sole source power, uh, justification forms, we probably would have went that route. But being that it is a new agreement, it needs to come before the board for consideration and or approval. I highly recommend it, I, I think it kind of closes the loop on a lot of needs within multiple departments um, to take care of things, whether it's cars or taking people out of the system or adjusting doors and things that may be a court need, a facilities need, a court security need. So I recommend approval, if you go to the first page, sir, of the um, maintenance agreement with Clark Security. Um, this would be a new expenditure, um, we would take this out of a facilities budget, um, it's not planned, but we can make that up somewhere. Um, we will, if it is approved tonight, we will keep this earmarked for FY23.
Mr. Gregg, do you have anything to add to what Mr. Weekly is, what's up?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Weekly, um, addressed the issues adequately.
If we have questions, comments on this, I mean, it seems like these people are, how often are they here, Sheriff? All righty, Clark Security, I mean, I can remember them being used two or three times the last year.
But I, but I think really, yeah, we had this meeting at Congress Stadium, and just, we had a lot of issues, a lot of concerns, a lot of small things that we cannot control, Lita cannot control, we need somebody to come in and adjust, especially the door.
Yes, sir.
Wants to be locked, wants to be unlocked, this is something now where it's normal mechanics, awful little button, machine, a lot of that stuff. Put out in.
Yeah.
Ten years ago, now it needs to be done. In my, in my opinion, it's well worth $600.
And I meant to add, this will cover 410 and 414 systems, uh, that they maintain as well. So that's, that's part of this agreement.
Who else has questions?
He's in our office, honestly, he's in office probably every other week, uh, probably an hour or more. Um, he comes after five o'clock sometimes, I get there, 7:30 in the morning, he'll be there. And a lot of times he doesn't charge for money, and we have armed the wall. We had alarmed the wall on election day and he was probably on the phone within two hours. And he told me walk this through, he was up north, but he still walked us through it. He's always in.
As you should.
They also have to use remotely access, like if it's never available, they could go right to their house. Turn on the lights, turn on the lights.
Other questions, comments, thoughts?
Yeah, I got, so I guess I had two questions to start with. Looks like I've won. Maybe both of them, but answers, who's doing this now? So these guys are doing it now?
Yes, sir.
And is this across all county-owned buildings?
It's a security equipment function, so we have that here at 410 and 414. And then the courts, the courts is the biggest component of it, but there is some smaller equipment here at 410 and 414.
Okay. And then the last paragraph on the next page. The last paragraph. Oh, I'm sorry, the next page. Says, this is a single visit per month. So I read it as, okay, this is, they come out here once a month for the $600, got eight hours to check everything. Single visit per month, 12 visits annually to perform maintenance to equipment and devices. Okay, I like that. I'm a maintenance kind of person. But then if we have issues outside of this routine maintenance, then we pay them $75 an hour to handle that?
Yeah, it's T and M from that point, yes.
But that, that is the purpose of this agreement right here is once a month, maintenance.
Right.
Just like, okay.
Right.
Other questions?
No, and I would assume that once a month would hopefully prevent them from, there from being too many cases where they have to come.
I mean, I would think that
Prevented.
You would think where maybe some of these cards, you know, you know they're coming. It would eliminate the need to call them for a special visit and kind of get into a pattern of handling them in a different way.
And it streamlines, and we're going to have a department meeting on it, but I mean, it streamlines the process. So if the sheriff needs something, he can call them direct. We will formulate other departments if we want it to be directly to, to, to Facilities Maintenance Manager, which is what I think Josh is. But you know, sheriff runs a 24/7 operations, no offense to other departments, so he needs to have that direct line. We'll probably look to have all other requests go directly to Mooney and he'll be Josh's main point of contact. But it does streamline, right now to call him. Thankfully, he came down. I think there were some door issues at other place. You don't know if he's going to be at Fort Belvoir or wherever. If we build in some consistency, then we have that service level. So to answer Mr. Mcquee, to add comment to Mr. Mcgee's, yes, hopefully this will cut down on more frequent needs of phone calls.
Mooney, you either have a comment or your back is hurting. Comment on this? There you go. What's, what do y'all want to do on this?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Clark Security and Services LLC proposal to provide Madison County Security Maintenance Monthly at an annual cost of $7,200.
Second.
Motion's made and accepted. Further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I do, my apologies, this isn't a normal, traditional, you usually see a lot of signature blocks and different things on agreement. I would like to ask Mr. Greg, should we set any sunshine, this to be considered annual or, you know, some type of provision or what's his thoughts?
Mr. Greg?
I believe it would be appropriate that this be reviewed annually. And with regard to the, Mr. Weekly's second comment, I believe it would be appropriate that we add signature blocks, which was essentially a proposal at this point, which we can accept by the notion that has been passed. So we formalize it with a document that is signed both by Madison County and by the best.
All right. I hadn't really had a change of motion or anything.
Clarity, thank you.
Yeah, just clarity. Motion's made and accepted. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signal five saying aye. Aye, post the same sign. All right, compensation policy.
So I'd like to maybe ask Mr. Greg to take lead because this will require a notice of public hearing. Mr. Greg, would you like to take lead, sir?
Certainly. This matter's come up and it's really kind of some housekeeping that I'm doing as I review our code. We have never had a bonus policy in place in the county. Most counties have one. I think it was probably, we've probably been, I can't speak for past board action, but I'd be very surprised if this issue didn't come up previously. And the idea of this is to have a public hearing specifically for the purpose of the board being able to, you know, only upon, you know, at open meetings, awarding bonuses for efforts by employees that are above and beyond the call of duty. We have had some instances of that where we wanted to acknowledge things. This issue has come up. I believe that the proposed ordinance that is set forth in the notice of public hearing would enable the board to do that. It would also satisfy the, the desire of the board to make sure that it is conducting its business out in the open, so to speak.
So the, the goal, and this is draft, I realize these published dates have expired. We brought this for you for consideration. So the, the strategy would be to, if the board authorizes for notice of public hearing, those two published dates should be changed to the 18th and the 25th. And if the, the pleasure of the board is to have it at the first December business meeting, that would be December the 14th. And then you would need to determine your time. I would suggest either 5:00 or 5:30. So Mr. Greg has thankfully and wonderfully covered the intent. This would be added as an ordinance after, you know, public hearing, should the board approve. It would be part of our personnel policy of how we would administer bonuses or any other consideration. So that the motion for your consideration would be approved, a public hearing, consideration of the ordinance as presented. And then you can set your date of the public hearing and time, Mr. Chairman.
This truly seems like just housekeeping. Anybody have any questions, comments, thoughts on this? What would y'all want to do?
Well, I move that we move forward with a notice of public hearing on the employee bonus policy, or whatever we call this.
Set the date and the time, please, if you don't mind, sir.
On the 15th, I see the 8th is the, I mean, the 7th.
The 14th.
14th, you're right.
It should be the 14th if you desire your first regular business meeting.
To set, to happen Tuesday, December 14th, at what time you want, 5:00?
That's up to, it's 5:00. I mean, then we're not waiting around. We can stop and do it. I'll second that. All right. Further discussion? Motion made and accepted. All in favor, signal five saying aye. Aye, post the same sign. All right. I think we'll just go straight to Mr. Greg here, zoning enforcement fees.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in going through our ordinances, I noticed that what we are charging for violations of zoning issues is $100 with a maximum for subsequent violations of $250. I believe the board should consider increasing those by whatever number the board believes is appropriate. And the reason I propose this is it would bring us in line with what other counties statewide are doing. And, you know, candidly, $100 doesn't faze people and cause them to correct their behavior. You know, if we increased those numbers to whatever the board thought, I was thinking 250 and possibly 500 or 750 even. You know, for subsequent violations, that would more likely get people's attention.
All right. So your, your recommendation at this point would be to go potentially, maybe go for the $100 current one to 250?
For the, for what I'm going to call a first violation and then for a subsequent violation, yeah, a higher figure. You know, 500 or 750 would be appropriate.
Y'all think?
Again, that's a decision to the ordinance.
Would that happen once or would that be monthly?
Yeah, how often?
For a violation.
What's the timeline to comply, Sean Gray?
Typically, what the court will do is give people whatever reasonable time is. That has typically been 30 days. And then we would have the right to bring the subsequent violation for someone's failure to correct a previous violation. The idea behind this is to give our enforcement provisions some teeth. And that's what we're attempting to do.
I hate to say it, I think we should go 250 for the first and then do 750 for the second. Because if the first doesn't get your attention and you're foolish enough just to continue with it, then 750 and subsequent, go 750 on top.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Greg. Sean, these are fees board, the board's considering, can they just take action or is this a public hearing requirement? How does that work?
It would have to be a public hearing. And the advertising requirements would be two weeks.
So since we're advertising in the paper, do we want to take advantage of this to the board of the December 14th date? Have two public hearings? All right.
Is the, are we in agreement, go 250 on the first and then 750 for second and subsequent charges? Is that what we're going to advertise on? I, if y'all want to do something different, follow me.
Ligon? Ligon, Ligon, what have you seen?
I would just say that if we get to a court, we take someone to court, it's going to be pretty egregious. But we're going to give everybody all kind of opportunities to come and compliance. So I don't see any issue with changing.
To these two, all right. So could the direction be to authorize a public hearing and Mr. Greg worked the draft up his, the public hearing for consideration, what, you know, what the fees will be, I guess is my question.
All right. We all think about that. Absolutely.
Now, I'm here, 250 is the
Do 250, all right. The motion that we should make is something to the effect of, we want to proceed to adjust the zoning enforcement fines from 100 to 250 for the first fine and then 750 for every sub-subsequential fine proceeding.
So I have 250 for the first offense, $750 for each additional offense?
Right.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I move that we have our county attorney draft the ordinance related to the zoning enforcement fees, changing from $100 violation for the first violation to $250 and changing the subsequent violation from $250 to $750 to be to be have, to have a public hearing on that on December 14th at 5:00 as well.
Second.
All right. Motion's made and accepted. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signal five saying aye. Aye, post the same sign. Any other new business? Information and correspondence?
I'll be quick, Mr. Chairman. So this is just an update to the board. The board authorized me to do a resolution to support the UDA concept of the town. We realized there's some time in there, but I wanted to let you know I have not completed that. The goal would be at the earliest is to bring that back for your consideration in the second meeting in November, unless you say we want that at a different time. Does seem like that if there is any extension of time, that would be based on the future conversation I'm going to have with a Mr. Chuck Proctor. I believe his name I got to mind. So I'm not trying to delay a board's action or directive. It's just I think we've got to get more pieces of the puzzle to put the puzzle together. So I will keep this as an information item, our own business, to keep you updated along the way. And we will ultimately take it to a resolution unless you give me a different direction.
Yeah, the resolution might not be the appropriate.
But we need to talk to this fellow, Chuck Proctor. The town brought him up. Maynard was supposed to email you the context of, but we'll get that somehow. See where we get with the smart scale and if we need to adjust the comp plan earlier than later, maybe that's the direction that we go. Not resolution, should be.
Okay, so we'll keep it as information, our own business moving forward, just I give you a proper update to the board. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. You do have some.
Anybody else?
All right.
Other information and correspondence? All right. Public comment. Public comment. Thank y'all for sticking with us. All right, we do have closed session. Don't mind, Mr. Dawson sticks around, closed session. Please. Ms. Hoffman?
I move that the board convene in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1 for personnel, 2.2-3711A8 for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Second.
Motion's made and accepted. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signal five saying aye. Aye, same sign. Five minutes.